Ready?
Get started here.
Sheesh.
Not very good.
The song is gonna...
Oh, I hated it.
No, God.
I don't know if you're dancing.
The...
I like to make dance in those things.
Oh, there's two strikes.
Hi, Franklin.
Hello.
So I talked to you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session at St. Trinidad. Today is Monday, April the 25th, 2022. The time is now 5:03 PM. And we will now begin the work session. We have a couple of items tonight. One is proposed workforce housing development strategies and incentive program. Michael Yearman can skip to complete the dente. And then we will have a mouthful discussion, continuing the family legislation discussion, and a third item, of course, if there's any agenda items that council wishes to bring forward in the other processes at the end. So let's start with the first item, which is the proposed workforce housing development strategies and incentive program. Michael, come on forward. But before you get started, I just wanted to mention a couple of things.
Okay.
There's some issue that were me or the thing?
Uh-oh.
And then if they allow me to share screen.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And if I can share screen, I'm probably gonna run the show off of here.
Okay, I'd like to, um, I've got a few things I wanted to mention first. And I got Debbie Wagner. Today, I spent a little bit of time with her over some of the bills that have been running. There have been multiple bills that have been running through the state legislature. And as, uh, there's several. Matter of fact, I got a copy of them here, how some of these that we may be able to use. And Michael, you might know of these already. The big thing that she says, uh, I'm not sure if she's going to, if that's something that he is thinking about us maybe moving forward or something tonight. Debbie was saying it may not be a bad idea to wait another couple of weeks until the legislated session is over because they are still introducing, they still like have like a hundred and some bills that they're still introducing. So we don't know if that would affect anything or not. But there are some bills that I believe that the city could use as what we could do is act as we get into the conversation. We could probably get Debbie to use an additional explanation as to what some of these bills are. She, uh, I copied three of them that she sent me that we could probably have a discussion on as well. So, uh, Mike, why don't you go ahead?
Sure.
Why don't you go ahead and start your presentation?
Yeah, if, um, if there were a way to allow me to share a screen, so I can run it off my computer, if I can. It says the host disabled. Otherwise, I send it to Audra.
Just for a second.
Technology is great, it works.
I just want to mention that council, we have copies of this call in this, did you look at that? It was all on housing this time around. Pretty amazing, some of the problems that people have in the state here, that 300,000 households that are paying more than 50% of their income this time around. And it's, uh, and it's crazy, but people having to pay for housing, that really puts them in a very machine.
We're seeing your outlook, um, with the PowerPoint. Is there any way to allow me to share?
Actually, I mean, you, our council chambers, the hosts.
This screen.
Oh.
Actually, uh, Audra, not the council chambers, but, uh, Michael Yearman.
Oh, sorry.
He actually got his computer logged in.
Okay.
Or actually, is this, is it touchscreen?
This is, uh, this is interesting.
Oh.
Interesting text. Okay, sorry.
We're either talking about a home sharing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Or if you touch shares in a household, people, they have different living quarters, I guess, if like they have like a preventive bath facility.
We said, uh, since I'm here. I glare that this.
Yeah, we have, that was pretty great.
Young mothers. Okay, we got it.
Simon, Michael's ready.
Please, ready.
All right.
Ready?
I think we're ready.
All right, go for it.
All right, um, so this is the, uh, fourth meeting of workforce housing. I'm glad you brought up the state, um, funding that is coming available. There is a kind of a monumental bill coming forward as an extra about 120 million a year up in DOH for housing programs. The purpose of this, and I, and we'll get into this, is to position the city in a way that those funds, that any of these incentives that you move forward with are able to be leveraged. Uh, that was one of the big directions I took from the meeting with Dola and Chappa, was ensuring that any incentive package would be able to be used as funds for a grant match product for an applicant to do housing.
Yeah, one of the things that I talked to Debbie about today, uh, and the reason why I called her was I said, you know, the thing that I see in your package of the 2.5, and you know, we may have some money for that, but I wish, and she said there might be money available to be able to add to, if we could only come up with a certain dollar amount.
Sure.
And force in that gap funding, and that maybe something can cover.
Yes.
And she was wondering if some of the information you had in here pertained to that meeting that we had with Dola and Chappa that day.
It did, it did.
That she wanted.
Okay, and we'll get, we'll get into that. You know, I, I don't want to spend, um, I know you guys had the needs assessment last week, and I watched that, and I was logged in. Um, I don't want to spend a bunch of time telling you everything. You know, I want to talk about housing solutions today, and kind of really get into it, but I am going to, I am going to, I'm going to talk in two minutes. I'll be really quick. It's because there's some, there's some important things in that needs assessment. I understand, I understand your comment on like, why are we, you know, why are you telling me everything I already know? Um, I, I totally get that. Um, again, we did three meetings, uh, so this is the culmination of those three meetings. One, you know, talking with the council upfront, we had the developer input, um, you know, the, we'll get into some of the stuff that development community has, has related to me. And then I think, you know, having Karen and Carolyn training here and talking about the programs that they offer and the potential to, uh, partner with them with any city funds that go into an incentives program, and ensuring that this is a handout, that those can be used as grant matching funds, et cetera, was really important in the three incentives that I drafted. Again, you guys know this, but I wanted to just recap. I mean, housing, housing is a good thing for economic development. I'm an economic development planner, I think you know this, construction is, development is a major employer in the valley. It's a long-term investment, it's how you build, uh, how you build wealth in America. It helps build community pride. And again, stable, housing leads to stable employees. Again, you guys know this, so, uh, you know, you have the mine reopening, we, we, let's go ahead, ran some projections on that. I mean, that's $27 million in extra, uh, annual wages in the community, which is very significant. Actually, I, I think someone asked me, had I ever seen a GDP jump like this when I first started here? And I was like, oh, yeah, we see this all happen, and I ran the numbers, like 39%. No, I haven't. That's really big. Uh, I think you have some, uh, you know, the lack of construction workforce, I think is a really big one. We've heard that from the, the development community. I think that's probably one of the biggest things that we're seeing as creating a bigger gap in Trinidad than in some of the other communities I'm working in, uh, doing some workforce housing projects, is that we aren't having the construction labor in a lot of the development community for the larger projects. They're having to bring the labor in, and they're paying actually for hotel stays, et cetera, to have the folks here for the week, and that's increasing their, uh, labor costs, which was quite, um, significant. Yeah, I mean, I think we've all heard this, the blood supply chain issues.
Did you, uh, talk to any of the local contractors about the labor shortages?
Yes. So we did in October for the open house, uh, I did phone interviews, sat down, went around, and met with your development community.
Were they willing to add construction workers if they could buy them?
Oh, yeah. They definitely were. You know, one of the, one of the things that was kicked around was could we get a, instead of, you know, could we get a lodging facility to be dedicated just to bring people in and give them discounted stays? Um, the, for instance, when I was down here, I was up on Quinta, and the summertime, like this time of year is not such a big deal, but once summer comes and Fisher Peaks gets going and the tourism industry picks up for the summer, that's when the real crunch really becomes. So about two months from now, uh, is really when the, when the labor force really struggles because they're, they're fighting for, for rooms. In fact, when I was here last summer, I was fighting for rooms, um, trying to get, you know.
Well, the other thing that's going to exacerbate this, and I think I mentioned this the last time you were here, is the railroad is going to start up, and they're going to have about 100, uh, employees, some may be local, but, so I'm not sure if those figures are even added into this.
They, they are, they aren't. I, I'll get into the needs assessment, because I had some questions about the needs assessment. I, I think it was a well-done document, um, but there are some numbers in there, and there's some kind of eyebrow raising. Actually, when I got to the draft needs assessment, I actually went back and, I mean, another day or two to actually redo my, my incentive packages, because there was some things that I was, that, that came up. So speaking of the needs assessment, um, so a couple of the big ones, I think you brought up the railroad, you know, the, this need for, uh, single and two-person households is really unique, uh, that they're bringing that out. I'm not seeing, I'm seeing the, the three, three-bed and two-bath as the big need for workforce housing. Um, I think it is, that is telling of the, the kind of labor that is, that's coming in to Trinidad with the mine and with the railroad potential. And also that you have a younger population that is that workforce that are seeking those jobs, and that's what we're looking for. The one big one, and I know, Mayor Ruko, you brought up with the needs assessment, the 2020 census. And I would probably agree with your assessment that it doesn't tell an accurate story of what's actually going on in your community. What I did, what did jump off the page, though, as far as the population data, was the loss of 612 students over the last 10 years in school, in school enrollment. That, that kind of tells you that you have an aging population, and you also have a younger population coming in. And I think when you kind of look at my incentive package, one of the big things I'm trying to incentivize is, is that one-to-two bedroom, especially when we talk about downtown living, one of the incentives, of trying to bring in those younger folks, allow them to get established in the community, and then move on to, to different housing. Um, you know, the, the needs assessment pointed out there's, that there's developers that already built 57 rental units, um, like that. If they can get some gap funding, we had, through development, the development conversations I had, there was the gap funding need was kind of brought up over and over again, that they could, this couldn't make the numbers work with the construction labor costs and needing that gap. So again, that's really where we're looking at. The light tech project, uh, I ensured that my incentives hit that, that allows for light tech. So, um, you'll see in here that the, like, tap fees, for instance, that's a classic way for the council to show support, is paying those tap fees for a larger project, it's a light tech project, because those are typically 30 to 60 units of rental housing of that lower income. Uh, but that is a traditional way for cities to help leverage those, those programs and assist that, it's a huge part of that capital stack. I could get into the complexities of that one, but light tech will be, you know, the fact that you have 146 units on that, on that spectrum up here, you know, I'm sure you saw this in the last, you know, this, this spectrum right here, where your light tech. I mean, that, that allows, you know, that is the first indicator that a market, uh, that a, that a developer who wants to do a light tech project looks at. When they see that kind of demand, that now, that's going to bring them in. It's also going to bring Chappa in when they see that. Your last light tech project was long enough ago with Space Decree, that you guys would qualify and be very competitive, which light tech is a very compelling project.
Just, just to let you know.
Sure.
Next week, uh, I'm supposed to, uh, present with a couple of the people for projects in town, uh, that they will be building some units starting next spring, and to Chappa. And, uh, so I mean, want to talk to you in a little bit, or perhaps.
Absolutely.
Points that you guys should use.
And then, and again, you know, when we get into the incentives, I have, I think you guys can adjust, there's a elasticity to my recommendation here, but I think the tap fee one is probably the highest priority, I think, for the council, because it allows projects like that. And it's, again, when we get into it, it's a real easy way, uh, because it's what you guys do, it's utilities. You don't do further construction, but you guys handle utilities, uh, and so that's a real easy way to support a project like that. I don't want to make, um, too big of a deal about the vacation rentals. I know there's some questions around that. What I will say is that it jumped off the page to me that you had a double, exponentially doubling amount of rentals. I also question that they captured, um, all of the vacation rentals that are actually in town, um, because it's really hard to do. I, we, in Crestview, we did one of the first, like, major short-term rental, uh, ordinances regulating short-term rentals, and we actually had to hire a company that minds those sites to really, because the, those rentals don't, they just, you can talk about Airbnb and they all show up, like, you type in Trinidad, it'll show you every rental that's there, because people could have, could have them booked for certain days, and they can take them on and off very quickly. What that does say to me, though, is that in what I'm talking about of how we protect the units, you know, making sure there's a restrictive covenant or protection doesn't allow short-term rentals to move in, especially on the new workforce housing one, uh, because those units are really attractive to folks who come out from out of town, see that as an investment property, it's brand new unit, it's nice, they can put, they can put people in when they're not here in town on vacation. You know, the last one is the, uh, is the higher end, this, this higher end need, this one jumped off the page for me. And what's interesting to me, and I, this is the one that took some, and we'll talk about it in the other, some incentive, what was interesting about that one is that normally your free market takes care of that, that's where the money is. That's, you know, when you're building a house, you can build a spec house, you know, it's a, you know, when you have the buying power and you have that kind of need on the backend, your normal development community is able to do that. Uh, and that's why, that's, I talked, I should talk to Mike, I was like, I think we need to have a third incentive, which is the new housing one, to start trying to build in some affordability, because I'm a little worried that that demand sitting out there is going to prohibit builders from actually work addressing your workforce needs and what you're talking about, because they're going to see the money on the other side of it, and they're going to build the nicer $400,000 homes for the folks that would fall on $350, $400,000 for these, for these folks, because there's such a demand out there. And what we're trying to do with the other incentive is to push them back into that workforce, which you guys need.
I think that's exactly what's happening right now, is all of the local contractors, they are building your specialty homes, your island homes. And one contractor, I talked to him the other day, and, you know, he's, uh, actually four or five homes behind.
Yep.
And we're talking high-end, so that's a problem.
Yeah, it's, it's, that, that's a, that was a, that one was stopping my, stopping my work from my tracks, um, the other day. So getting into solutions. Done talking about. Don't know what you're talking about, I don't know what's happening. So when I put this together, the target was 100, 100 new or rehab units. So if you look at your demand, you're in about 151 unit need. If this work plays out over two years, and you spend $2.5 million, and you got 100 new workforce housing, woo-hoo! I think half of that would be fantastic number, uh, because you got to remember housing's exponential, right? So you build a new house, someone moves into the house, it's a value unit, that actually creates two units of, of access, right? Most time, not all time. But, you know, the goal here is to, um, really incentivize the current developing community with two short-term incentives to get them going, and then the long-term incentive, which I think is the tap fee deferral. I have seen that, if you, long as you have good policies around that, that is a great program, that brings in the state funding and allows you guys to be there. So first and foremost, you know, uh, when Sky was here, we actually, he did some surveys of the downtown, they found at least 60 units that the last, the last, uh, property search that he gave me was still a little, still had some, some things in there, there was at least 60 current vacant units, and I think there was probably about five to 10 more that he thought were there and had to do further investigation. But if you look at that, at 40 of those units, if you're able to bring back in your downtown, and those are your one and two-bedroom units, at $25,000 a pop, that, I mean, building a new unit right now is $250,000. So you're doing about 10% of the cost of a new unit, uh, in your downtown, and you're investing the money in downtown. And so that, to me, um, in my humble opinion, because I know how hard rentals are to build as well, especially ones that aren't light tech, that right there is really truly the one recommendation I would strongly recommend, is really considering that and adjusting, again, there's some elasticity in adjusting that amount. The new workforce housing, again, targeting up to 65 units, which is a $15,000 per unit, again, another million-dollar ask, um, incentive that. And then the last one is the, I'll get into each of these in detail here in a minute. The last one is the, uh, tap fee deferral program. I know that you currently have the incentive package sitting there, um, in your, in your fund balance. My suggestion, though, um, as a planner, is to adjust that fund balance, put some extra money in there, so that if you have competing projects coming in, 100, I think it's 136 is roughly the balance right now. That doesn't allow, like, if I was your city planner, that doesn't allow me to talk to two different developers and say, especially if you have a large project where they might have a $90,000 cap fee, as they're doing 40 or 50 units. It doesn't allow that flexibility in saying, allowing them to go approach the state funder, they need to approach for their capital stacks if the funding might be gone from one project to the next. So bringing up that fund balance, um, and then I think over time, your 4% yearly contribution will keep it there. So getting into details, um, before I do, again, this is not a handout, I want to be real clear on that, you can't make this a handout. All of the units that receive these funds need to be protected. And the, I'm calling it a restricted covenant, you could call it a de-restriction if you wanted to. My personal opinion is that because you don't have a active housing authority that can monitor de-restrictions, you can actually do a land, a restrictive covenant on the property as a legal document that the current owner signs and has, and is assignable to the next owner on sale. And it can protect two things. It can protect long-term rentals, and it can protect that it's primary residence and the person who's, at least one occupant is fully employed in that unit, uh, in Los Angeles County at the time of sale. And then that, if they, they move on, they sell the unit, that restricted covenant lives with the unit. And that's really important, because that protects your investment long-term, again, keeps, keeps the short-term rentals out of those units that you put the money into, it keeps second homeowners out of those units. And furthermore, that it actually preserves long-term rental units, especially when we start talking about the downtown, because those could become attractive to, um, folks that buy, have a house downtown, and, oh, like, you know, they'll have yards, you don't have to worry about maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. So I've seen a lot of that turnover. On the rental program, rental agreements. So, uh, rent control in the state of Colorado is illegal, but a voluntary rent agreement between the city and a property owner is legal. So they can voluntarily enter into a rental agreement, right? You can't force through code to say that you have to rent at a certain price because you felt development approval. Are you journeying?
Yes.
Okay.
So you disagree with that, is that so?
No, no.
I got pushed me on, like, decisions.
I got the look. Sorry. I'm getting illegal by some. But, but you can enter into an agreement, um, and most of those voluntary agreements that I'm recommending with the downtown, would be just be a short-term voluntary rental agreement, where they wouldn't charge a, they wouldn't charge above a certain A-line. One of the considerations that's in your packet is either 80 or 100%. But what that does is it incentivizes that property owner to get the unit back up, running, keeps it affordable for the first year, two years, three years, four, five, whatever you decide, um, it allows it to go. You know, when you start thinking about these incentives, I would really encourage the council to think about what it is right now to build a brand new unit. So if you're going to build a thousand square foot, two-bed, two-bath unit at 225, that's 225,000. When you're talking about incentivizing a downtown owner for 25,000, that's 10% of what it costs to build a new. And so you, and beyond that, you got to remember, too, that you already have, those units in downtown especially are already connected to your infrastructure, there's not extra demand, um, that you're going to see there, you're not having to extend utilities, et cetera, uh, and then obviously you're, you're investing in the downtown. When, when we looked at this, when I looked at how to formulate this, I tried to make sure that it wasn't above a 20% gap in the gap funding. But I think that's enough of an incentive, uh, that makes sure that the developer brings skin into the game to come. And then again, you got to remember, there's no short-term rentals and no second homeownership out of these units that you put money into. You want to make sure that the intention lives on, even after the first fire. And again, we looked at the state files. So getting into the downtown and vacant residential incentive program, uh, again, this is, uh, this is really a, a program that is looking at those vacant units, um, the funding of a million bucks would bring in 40 of those 60 units that, that were identified. You could extend this into vacant, currently blighted vacant property and residential as well, um, like single-family homes that you guys have identified as blighted property. That would take some tweaking to the policy that we would need to write up for that, um, because there would, we'd have to define blight versus, you know, like, what is a truly blighted vacant home that someone has to put a lot of capital into versus someone buying a house and putting 10,000 bucks in and selling it, right? But, you know, the, what I would suggest is the maximum per property, because you do have some, you do have some downtown properties that could do over 10 units, um, is that you would cap the max at 200,000. But I think that's important, the reason I'm recommending that, and I think it's important, is that you don't want to put all your eggs in one project, right? That, that would assure that there's equal access to the funds for your downtown property owners. You know, the units have to either be currently vacant or in need of major rehab. You can instruct your building department, and we'll get into like the, how the process works, but basically you would do a site visit to make sure that the unit truly means.
Do you have any recommendations of the minimum number of units to even address?
I would do one if you could get it. Uh, I, I would do one to 10, I mean, every unit's worth it, um, especially in downtown. Eligible expenses, um, you know, you're really looking at permanent improvements to the property. So the things, it's easier to explain why you're trying to avoid, it's things that could be, somebody could buy something, put it in, you get, you do the inspection, and the next day it comes, it's gone. So there's stuff that's really in there. The one thing I didn't have in here as an eligible expense is the, is kind of the, um, sweat equity, and something I could put in there, like paying, or like the, the unskilled labor. That is kind of a consideration for the council, but that one's a little bit harder in your document. But I think you do want to allow that if someone has to hire, because, because they would have to hire an electrician or a state plumber to pass an electrical or some quality inspection, I think you allow that labor, uh, because you can clearly document and you can actually see that they pulled a permit to do those electrical work. Also, you, you want them to do a good job on that in your downtown buildings. Permit keys as well would fall under this, and that would actually be the first chance for them to receive funding. So basically, the application process would be that they, that someone in the downtown or vacant property owner, if you choose to do that, would come in with a, with an application, they would have a budget, and they'd have a proposed scope of work, they would meet with your building department or planning department, uh, your planner or building inspector could go through it, they would go then do a site inspection to make sure that, you know, document what the current unit looks like, and make sure that the money is being spent in the unit. I would guess that depending on the shape of the unit, that if they're spending more, if they're going for the full 25,000, that they're spending more than 25,000 in the unit. And, uh, basically, once the site visit is conducted by the staff, uh, they can receive a notice of award by the city. The notice of award that you'll see in both this and the, um, other project, or the other incentive package, I think is important, because I, I think to create urgency with the program, you have to obligate funds to the folks that walk in the door that are being proactive, and tell them that they have, you know, don't make it a race to finish, but make it a race to start. And so by, basically by you documenting as a city that you have, you know, 23 units that have come in for the incentive package, then you can announce to the community, there's this much sitting in the bank, so. Once that's expended, I, I would truly keep a cap on this, I would make this a bigger program. I wouldn't let this kind of languish, I would really try to create that urgency, because it, it is what you need now, you know, you need housing now. And if you decide, say this is a great success, and you want to re-up it or redo the program, reassess in two years, but I wouldn't suggest making this a open-ended program. The incentive award, um, so basically, they would know that they have that, they pulled a building permit, they go and do the work. The first incentive piece would be waiving the building permit fees, which would be part of the money that they got, um, so they would get a little chunk up front, so they would have to pay permit fees. And once they are ready for final inspection, um, what you would have before you write the check back to them is a, uh, either a two-year rental agreement in hand, that's been executed by the property owner, or a restricted covenant, um, you could do both, or you could do one or the other. That's one of the things that we should talk about, have them done today. But again, the incentive reward is awarded upon CO or the final, for final inspection. You don't need to do a CO on existing projects. But that's, you know, you know, the work is done, you get the receipts, you see that But that's, you know, you know, the work is done, you get the receipts, you see that the money was spent in the way that that was awarded, and you have a new unit. Sure.
The, the two-year rental agreement and restricted covenant execution, are those both just two years? They're only effective for two years?
Well, restricted covenant will live, so I got a lot here to curtail. But the way, typically the way a restricted covenant is, is placed on the property is in perpetuity. There are some, there are some lending things around in the event of foreclosure that they wanna see those go away. However, the fact is that these are pretty light on the restrictions. So it would be something that have a conversation with the banks, but they shouldn't, no bank should balk at the fact that it needs to be a primary residence.
Okay, so the, the first two years, there's a limit on the amount that they can charge for it. And then from that, and then from, from the beginning and into perpetuity, there's a restriction that it can only be a long-term rental and not, you can't sell rent outright?
You could plan long-term rental or primary residence. So they could sell, so they could condominiumize, but it would have to be sold to somebody who's buying it for the primary residence.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, that would be my recommendation. And you certainly, on the restricted covenant on this one, I think that's a policy decision for the council to weigh in on because whether or not you want to add on the restricted covenant on this piece or just require a rental agreement and get it up and moving is kind of a, a policy decision. Knowing your downtown property owners, and if they see that as too heavy-handed to potentially invest in. I don't think it is, because again, it's primary residence. You know the person's gonna live there. And banks will like on that. I mean, actually, on most mortgages, you actually have to consent that it's your primary residence. Unless you're, unless you're forthright and say I'm short-term renting, then you get a different, different mortgage. Yes?
Okay. It says you got forty units in the rehab that we can do, right? But we don't own those. They're, they're owned by private people. And how are we gonna get them to go with these buildings? I mean, real units and that, maybe they don't want them. We have a, one guy that just bought a building on East Main there. He's putting in a motel with a rental deal, which is fine, I mean, that's good. But some of the other places may not be available, so we're kind of spinning our wheels there unless we can get somebody to.
I, I, I think twenty-five thousand bucks is, is quite a character dangle in front of a property owner that has a vacant building. So I mean, you're right, this is one hundred percent voluntary.
I talked to somebody Saturday night, one of the other building in town, and they plan on doing some units upstairs.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's several doing, there's several doing it, yeah, but then there's some that aren't, you know. But forty units is a lot for, they don't, and when you're looking at sixty-five new units, are you looking at the downtown area or in particular, one particular area?
Let's jump to that one here in a sec. I'll answer that. But let's stay, let's stay on this for just a minute. I think you're right on the downtown. I think forty is optimistic. I think, I think if you spend a half a million dollars in the downtown on getting units back up, you guys have done a great job. Twenty units would be amazing in downtown. I, I, I'm a big, I always got knocked on when I ran affordable housing in Crescent View that I was doing like projects that were four units and six units. And after six years, like I did these small little projects and added up to a hundred and one units, everyone was like, holy, holy cow! How'd that happen? Like you just, why didn't you just do it? And I would constantly like, do a big project. And I, I honestly think that the, I mean, it's a small town, you guys are a small town. Investing in your individual property owner's own property for years, to me, is the right way to go. I mean, you can bring in big developers with these incentives, but you're really targeting your locals. And you're trying to motivate them to pay, roll their sleeves, invest in their properties, and get, get this building back up and running. And again, if twenty, if you spend a half, I think, to me, you would knock it out of park if you got twenty units out of this. And you know, I would think so too. It would be, it would be amazing. Twenty units will go a long way in downtown. There's, there's people on the streets, there's people eating in restaurants at night, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a game changer. Because the other thing too is there's critical mass, right? So in two years, you see, you know, a property owner's next door has a vacant building, seeing their, seeing the guy next door bringing in rental every, every month and making, he's got forty units, he's charging seventy, seventy fifty or whatever he's making, you know, he's making three thousand bucks a month now on a building that he was making nothing on. It's motivating a factor to say, hey, I wish I would have done that, well, maybe I'll just do it. So I, I, again, you have, you, you guys are on the precipice, I see, I see it every time I walk downtown. I think a little bit of, a little shot to the arm for downtown property owners is what it's gonna take to really kinda just turn the, turn the page. And I think you guys have done an amazing job in downtown.
How many units is David doing? I'm not sure, in, she's, she's mentioned in.
I think it's fourteen or fifteen.
Oh, at East Street? Yeah, I thought you meant, uh, East Street. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think that's what's there.
She was talking, talking earlier today, she was talking about an open house, surely. Yeah. I think you expect a little bit of it.
But I think those are, those are perfect projects that, that, I mean, the East Street one is one that I've heard of. And again, two hundred thousand bucks as a gap, as a gap fund, funding would probably be a motivating factor to, to say, hey, maybe I'll break ground sooner or later on that project before these funds are out. You know, and I think that's really the motivating factor, money, you know, money talks. You know, they, they, O N had an amazing program, though it was actually for private property owners. It required a fifty percent match, the Colorado Community Revitalization Grant. It was very successful, it was run through CCI. I would be shocked if that is, doesn't make it back into the funding. Again, Erico, I think you're a hundred percent right, it would behoove you to make sure that we need to structure the incentive once the state announces all the programs, to make sure these fit neatly in them. That's, that's a great idea. You know, the obviously the state sort of tax credits, because if the person, if the property owner is investing on the outside, the facade, they could take advantage of that program. Main Street and Creative District programs also are constantly in the mix for what they put out every year. And again, with this, I think you're, we're in a unique circumstance in that the state over the next three years has more money for housing than they have ever had. And then it falls off again. So it's just a three-year appropriation. So, so by, that's why, again, as, as part of the reason why I'm saying make this a two-year program to the end of twenty twenty-four is to really make sure that your money is best suited, or you're, you're betting on the grants. You're betting on putting your property owners in the best position. You know, like I said, additional considerations. The only, the only big one that I would, there, there's two here that I would really point out. One is whether or not you want to go beyond the downtown and you want to tackle blight. My suggestion on how to look at that is to, to allow this to play out for a year. So next summer, see how this plays out, see how much, you know, again, you have, are you gonna spend all, all four units in the downtown? And if you're not seeing it, then you could also extend this into blighted residential property. You know, there was a statistic like in the census or something, that was like six hundred units of vacant property and that. I don't know where that number came from. Sky mentioned it a couple times, Steve. But my point is bringing that up is that I think there is an opportunity for residential. But I would strongly recommend you consider downtown first because, again, going back to the needs assessment, those, those rental units are really needed. I think if you put this money in your residential, you're gonna see a lot of folks starting to sell those units. You know, they're gonna go in and fill them. It's not gonna achieve their rental property need.
You should have commented there, sure. On, when we're doing the downtown area and some of these farms, especially like if they're on top of floors and that. Are we gonna run into, and I, I know we are, issue with ADA with the sprinkler systems and the elevators and stuff like that? So isn't that gonna add more cost to the twenty-five thousand incentive or?
No, I, so, well, I don't wanna speak for your building official. If you have, do you guys adopt the existing building code? Yeah. So the existing building codes, you don't need to, especially depending on the size of the project, you wouldn't have to make it ADA accessible if you don't hit certain thresholds and they were already existing residential units. The sprinkler systems, that's a whole different discussion depending on what building code you're on. But again, if you have four units and it's a hundred thousand dollars, that might be the, finally, the, the amount of money you needed to go in and actually retrofit, put the sprinkler system in and meet that code requirement. I mean, you know, knowing what a residential sprinkler system costs, you're probably at about eight to twelve thousand a unit. So that's half of the incentive is just putting the sprinkler system in if they needed it. But again, it, it really comes down to the interpretation of the building code official and what, and the current state of the unit. If you're not expanding the unit, et cetera, and it's existing, you know, I, I can tell you, I've walked around a lot of the downtowns in our district, and I'm in thirteen counties. I can tell you, there's a lot of boxes sitting on existing toilets and kitchen stoves in the units that are reused for storage. So, you know, it could be just as, as easy as the property owner going in, gutting, putting in a new heating system, putting in new fixtures, and getting the unit back up and running.
You know, one of the things that's going to exacerbate the cost that you're talking about with this sprinkling system is there's this house bill, thirteen sixty-two, that greenhouse gas emissions bill that could really play havoc with some of this stuff. And right now, it's, it's hanging in limbo, problems are heavy today. I'm not sure anything transpired, because it's, forget words, when it's up in the issue, might be a hell as well. That could be an issue with some of these units as well.
Yep. But, yeah, yeah. I, I have my own opinions on that one, so I'll just keep it there. Anything else on the downtown? Questions on this one before I jump?
The big thing that I was gonna say is that, you know, concentrating on the downtown area is fine, but people that might have some of these units, individual units out in the rest, they're gonna say, they're doing anything downtown, why not me? And I think that's something that we're gonna have to.
And I, I, I think, and again, remember that this is, this is multiple, right? You know, so if you, if you do want to extend this into the, the residential vacant, then what I will say is then the other, the other big one on one, the restricted covenant sign future occupancy is less.
Too, I think, you know, the, the considerations that would drive that would be, part of what we're trying to do is revitalize the downtown area. Not some street where we're there, that's nice, and hopefully we'll get to it, but the downtown area is the heart of the city. So it makes all the sense in the world to put funds where they're gonna be, have the biggest bang for the buck for the city.
Well, one of the things, you know, I read that book called Strong Towns. And they, they talked about the downtown area, but they're also talking about your infill, rather than trying to divot and, you know, bring in additional property, you know, all this other stuff. Kind of, that's why I say concentrate on what you have now, I think. It's, it's one, it's one piece of work for the best way.
And I think when we get in, so to jump into this, when you talk about the new, and the infill, potential infill, this is where you can expand into the residential areas and as well into the TAPV. And one of their, one of the big considerations of the TAPV deferral program is where you allow folks to tap both, tap two programs here, which would be a twenty-five thousand dollar investment. The big one on this one, again, goes back to that needs assessment where your, the mayor, where you brought it up, where the high-end, where sellers, and I dealt with this in Crescent View when I first started, they would much rather build for four hundred and fifty a square foot and build one house a year than to come and work for me and build six affordable housing at two twenty-five. They're like, ah, I think I would much rather just kind of chill. And I respect that. But this really, this dangling carrot in front of the necessity of you actually build to the workforce level that we need, there's some incentives in here, and especially if you pair this with the, with the TAPV deferral as well. But really, this is looking at, and, and the state programs are a hundred and twenty percent AMILOS. But really, when we start talking about affordability, especially with rising interest rates, that's where I, the interest rate is going to five percent in the last two months, really has made this need even more because you're buying power, especially as someone that has a, just a normal full-time job. That three hundred and fifty, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar unit is now not, not a table. If you was, then now your payments have gone up on that unit, three hundred dollars a month with an interest rate hike. So what's really, what's, what's really important about this is the actual, that, that the initial sale would be offered at price points under a hundred percent AMI. You can see those price points. Those, those are a little adjusted based on what, what came out of the needs assessment. The actual AMI table is a little different, but this was the, when you read your study, the two ninety-four is what was based off, was kind of the, the target unit. That's sort of your three-bed, two-bath unit that came out of your needs assessment, you just recently completed. So this, this process is a little different. The applicant, again, would come in, have a time of building permit, and the builder would make the commitment that they're gonna hit these price points to, to receive the incentive. They would, again, you would give them a letter saying that you have a, you have two years to complete your project and you will be awarded the funding if you complete the bill and offer at that price point in the next two years. What's important again about that is you're not pitting people against each other. Once they pull their building permit, they know that that funding is sitting there for them on the back end. They would, once they get to CEO, right, before CEO, they would execute a restricted covenant, which would limit the occupancy of the, of the unit to a primary residence in which one person is employed full-time in Los Angeles County, one occupant. You can actually put into the restricted covenant, which I wouldn't have carry on beyond the first sales, that you can put in there that the initial sales will be put X price point. So that's how you make sure that the builder doesn't execute the, it's like restricted covenant, get the check, and then charge more. You can also put some, put pretty powerful stick in there as well. But we don't need to do all that, because everyone's gonna do, everyone's gonna do what they say they're gonna do. The, again, the incentive award would be, would be given to the developer. So it's, it's a, it goes to the developer, not the first buyer. At CEO, the unit would be sold to a degree upon price point, and restricted covenant would be there in perpetuity, again, making sure that it's occupied by the workforce.
Are your prices set for, I mean, if someone comes in, wants to build one for a three-bedroom for three hundred, for three fifty, three twenty-five, they would call that sold, then those are set dates that we would set, and they wouldn't be able to go either way, I mean, just say higher.
You, you, so every year, the AMIs are adjusted. What I would recommend is that before you would adjust these, you would do a really hard look at what's truly affordable. Because what's not, what's not telling, and we've been in a period of low interest rates for so long. With these interest rate hikes that we're seeing, we, is a real, is a real delicate balance of making sure that, what it, what it comes down to is what's their monthly payment on a third year ago. It's less about the price point, it's more about the monthly payment. Erico pointed out that fifty percent, or three hundred thousand folks in Colorado are, are stressed, highly stressed. I mean, you don't want, the whole point of this program is, but it's not for the builder, it's for the buyer, right? You're how, basically, you're giving the buyer a down payment assistance and keeping that price point lower and, and allowing them to pass on, especially with the interest rates going the way they're going. So I think it's adjustable, yes, but do so with care. Yes?
I, in this, in your summary, it says that the incentive could also be eligible for projects that offer rental units documents under a hundred percent AMI. Is that so that a developer could build a house that's intended to be a rental, but have to limit the rental cost?
So the, so the, so the reason that's in there is that eighty percent AMI rental is, that's gonna wind up being a de-restricted unit. Because those units that are eighty percent AMI or less are, are gonna be using the state funding. And the state, the other thing to keep in mind is if you have a state funder coming in and putting a de-restriction on a property, you don't need your own restricted covenant as well on the property. Their, their, their de-restrictions are gonna be really strict. So that's great, really perfect, the state's already taking care of it. So I think that's why I put that in there, is that I wouldn't recite that if someone has a large project that has that state funding coming in, you might consider, again, rentals are really hard to build, so you can get them, have to take advantage of them.
What about an ADU? What about an ADU that someone want, wanna build on their property?
So ADU, great, great question. What I would suggest is that, huh? What I, what I would suggest on, we have a separate conversation about ADUs. ADUs in my career have been like saving grace for SLIDA and for Crescent View. They have provide, with, in SLIDA especially, without ADUs, SLIDA would have a much larger housing problem than it does currently. And they, SLIDA has two rules with ADUs around incentives. One, it has to be a long-term rental, and two, they actually cut the, they reduce the TAPV to like, like a fraction of what it costs right now to incentivize, incentivize it. So there's other ways to go about ADUs that aren't like this. I, I don't, I think ADU, and I know there's some things around zoning that you need to talk about with ADUs first. So I think you're, I don't think you're ready to put that into this incentive. Again, there are some programs out there, and I think the state will have a new list after. Uh, again, there are some programs out there and I think the state will have a new list after, after, uh, they, the legislators done with what they're doing. Uh, but right now, House Bill twelve seventy-one is kind of the first time that the state's actually bumped up. Uh, you're starting to see that CHAFA is realizing across the state that they call it the missing middle. Uh, it's a term that's been turned around, that's about eighty to one twenty percent, one forty percent AMI. So you're starting to see the state funders kind of realizing that the typical funding that they have been doing in these communities is not really addressing a lot of what we're seeing in workforce housing need. Uh, and so I think, Mayor Rico, you're a hundred percent correct, that this, this will be an opportunity for developers to go and be a little bit more attracted to those programs because they will be able to also get this additional funding.
Is that called your middle income?
They call it the missing middle.
Really?
Yep, that's the big term that's going around with the state. And it's, it's, it's gone past the resort communities now, I think that's why you're seeing a kind of a, you're seeing a lot of willingness to adjust programs. Uh, though, I was shocked to hear a hundred and forty percent come out of Dole's mouth. So it's great, it's great, I mean, it's, it's, I've been, I pushed for that for years, uh, because if you have, the, the thing about AMIs is you gotta keep in mind, the, look, if you're a single person in a fifty, you know, they can make forty-two thousand a year and they're at a hundred percent AMI. What doesn't happen is it doesn't double if you're married to somebody else that has a job. It, it only goes up in, you know, a small amount. And that's really where the missing middle really hurts, is if you're, if you're a family, you don't, two, two, two full-time workers all of a sudden start to push themselves out of AMIs. And I think that's been a kind of a folly of the AMI system for years, in my opinion, and again, I'm not here to preach, but I think it's one of the big things to keep in mind, especially when you look at, you know, school enrollments going down, et cetera. This program that I'm talking about only sets the price point, it doesn't say the applicant has something come out, right? And it's the same thing with the rentals in the downtown. The price point is that you don't have to make less than a hundred percent AMI to qualify, it's only the, the rental price that said that. Same thing with the own purchase price. So if you're, if you have additional means and you're able to do that, you're able to walk into that, you know? But it's really making that affordability. Yeah, income qualifying is not, I wanted to make sure, I should probably clarify that from the get-go. Income qualifying is not part of, you, 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 you could certainly do that as a council, but I think there's a lot of advantages to not doing that, again, being that AMIs are kind of, kind of skewed to, to not really assisting that, those families. Um, this last one is probably, what I would say is, this is the traditional, um, traditional program that a lot of communities do. The, the beauty of this is that you're actually paying yourselves. Uh, so I would, you know, your enterprise funds, like you probably probably amen, we don't waive fees, we still have to pay the super fund, that's a TAFV, right? We, we still have debt service. And it's really important too that you acknowledge that you're not waiving TAFVs because when you're paying other folks TAFVs as, as a council, you're actually increasing your existing users' debt burden, right? But if you're actually putting money back into those enterprise funds, it's not affecting those, the folks that live in your community now. In fact, it's actually helping them because, you know, there's obviously the system development fee, which pays for big plan expansion, but more importantly, it adds another user who pays into the system every month after they move in. So it's actually a benefit to existing users, because the more existing users, users you have, the cheaper that you can keep, you know, your, your water rates and everything else. Um, but this is really important, it's not a waiver, uh, and I think it's a very easy smell test. I don't think you need to, I think it's a keep it simple stupid philosophy. If it is deed restricted, it qualifies, that's simple. If it has a deed restriction on it, it qualifies. If it has a restricted covenant, it qualifies, because again, you know that that unit is protected in perpetuity. Yes?
On the, eat, uh, TAFVs and stuff like that, that would, I, I can see that. What do we have in these people, we're building an area where it needs roads and everything else, uh, that's not included in TAFVs, right? So that would be up strictly up to the builders and not us.
Yeah.
Are we, that would be separate, none of this program would have any of that.
You know, I, I, I thought long and hard about that, and I think it goes to what Mayor Rico kind of pointed out, which is the infi, the infill need, you have existing infill demand, you have existing subdivisions that have been built, you have quite a large subdivision of the edge town that has a lot of capacity, that has infrastructure. Uh, again, residential development never pays its own way. So you're, as a city, when you add a big subdivision and long-term, you're gonna be paying for that subdivision, uh, because again, the Gallagher Amendment, you only pay a third of what you pay for commercial tax. Um, so I really think it's important that, and, and I thought long and hard about that, about annexations, et cetera. Um, you can certainly think about that, but again, when you're talking, the other big thing is you need housing now. And if you have a new development coming in, that, that by the time they get your subdivision, engineering, everything, two years is gonna be long gone. And who knows what the housing market's gonna look like in two years? Uh, you got a large employer that is recession, almost recession food, fuck I don't know what I should have said there. Um, that's moving in near Valley that I think is the reason Trinidad looks like Trinidad, is because you had that employer years ago and that money was in the community and made Trinidad what it was. But by putting, by investing now and making sure that your current workforce is taken care of, that was a big decision point on these recommendations.
Now, the other point is, how do we get these places built? I mean, where are we gonna get the labor force? Because this is, I think, no matter what, it's gonna be the biggest issue because as long as people are building in Denver, careful in these other places, you, and then, like you said, the contractors around here are, they're booked. I mean, I, I've had guys ask me to go to work for them, tell them, we're gonna retire for thirty years, I don't wanna. But, I mean, that's, that's how hard it is to find people to come to work to do anything.
What other, I mean, are, how, what are they doing in terms of this situation?
I, I mean, I, I think the, 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 well, two, there's two things. You do, you bring in enough of this economy scale that you, there's enough profit on the, on the back end. But, or do something like this, which incentivizes your, your contractors to take on projects that they're, that they're getting this gap funding for.
What are other communities besides ours doing this? I mean, you, 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 I mean, I mean, are they doing, are we competing with people doing incentives like this?
You are and you aren't, you are in the, so for instance, uh, in the, the six counties in the southeastern plains, they put up six hundred thousand dollars, but they ate their broccoli and made all of their sites. We're building eighty-three, we're breaking ground on eighty-three units in about three weeks. The reason that project's gonna work, across same communities, the reason that project works is that the local governments made all the sites ready to build. So that means that the builder's showing up and they're ready to go vertical. I actually, when I did interviews with the development community and said, hey, would you take on this contract? All of them said, I'd rather have some, you know, a medical procedure, I shouldn't name on the television, beyond going and actually doing all the planning work that you're gonna do. And I was like, I guess I get that medical procedure the next month, because I'm gonna do all that work for you. But we made that, the reason that builder, and it was competitive contract, was that those sites are ready to go. I think that's kind of the same thing here, is that what you're doing is you're, you're taking away the, the need for ad mill and making the, making the budget work for your building community, uh, on, on, by, by offering them a care like this, right?
Who did that builder compile it of?
Uh, he is based out of Oklahoma and, um, uh, and, and he, he did a project in Crestview. But actually what happened, what happened was that the two competing developers on that project actually, actually worked together. So they, so I actually had an opportunity, uh, so an investor who was going to, was competing with them, and they actually said, you know what, if you're gonna take on the headache of building, we'll buy it from you because you're building out that cost and we'll just, we'll just support you. Uh, so we actually got a double whammy in that, the two developers. And they actually came to us and were like, would you consider building for us? And I was like, absolutely. Uh, so yeah, that's, that's, that was actually the unforeseen, you know, benefit of that project. Um, so again, the last ones on this, um, obviously, uh, is just making sure, um, whether, the, the big question on this one, sorry, is, uh, whether or not you want to allow other, there's other two incentive projects that have TAFVs that also qualify for this. My suggestion is that any unit that has a restricted covenant, again, anything that protects the long-term affordability and keeps workforce in it, that would qualify for this program. Uh, I, I, again, when you talk, I'm a big believer in, if you can get a unit, get it. You know, if you can get a unit for the TAFVs, it's worth the investment, you know? And I would take it every time because it's, I've built new construction for years and it's so expensive and your subsidies are much bigger than the, the TAFVs that, that you wind up in. And again, that's when you look at the state programs and make complex capital stacking that's in there. So, uh, my two senses, that those fifteen thousand of the new affordable housing units, if they put a restricted covenant on, they'd also qualify for TAFVs. Uh, and again, it keeps your systems healthy because you're not waiving TAFVs. You're actually paying, you're paying your own enterprise funds for that. Um, the other one on this one, Mike, you might weigh in on this, but I wouldn't recommend this, but I think it'll become a developer question, is whether or not you cover costs for materials like meter, actual meters, uh, and the insulation of those, uh, as part of that. I don't know what your common practice is, um, on that. But I would say it's normally just a fee and not, and not that, so.
That's what you do, yeah.
And so just being explicit with that, when you do this, when you do this.
We're gonna comment on that after, sure.
Got you. Okay, that's everything.
I was gonna mention, that's why I brought it up before you started your presentation, that I mentioned is that, you know, you got your suggestion two point five, got available for incentive fees and covered different things. In some of these bills that are out there, there is money available that we can apply for. So if we can have a matching fund to build on it, the more that we can, if we can apply for some of these funds, we can create, increase that incentive plan. And do what you're talking about, you know, maybe we couldn't pay for maybe some of the equipment that goes in, maybe some of the construction materials, not necessarily all the boards and stuff, but. So I, I think that that is, the real big thing that we need to look at is, because in looking at some of these bills, there is some of that money available. Because we have, uh, according to that, if we have matching funds for it, which we can leverage with the money that we have now, to get additional funding, that's what will make us more attractive to be able to add to this incentive program also. If we can turn that two point five into five, it becomes a big, big picture.
So that's a great segue to the next steps. So one of the important things of the next step of this is, again, I, you can shrink or make it bigger, smaller, adaptable as you want. Why, what I would suggest is that you bring forward resolutions adopting these policies, and then the adopting resolution, once those bills come out, because for instance, House Bill twelve seventy, twenty-one, twelve seventy-one, they actually wanna see qualified strategies, and one of the qualified strategies for that grant is actually that Sydney has a dedicated fund for TAFVs. So it's more your, and so it'll make you more competitive in those grant funds coming out of the state to have existing funds and policies adopted. However, you're gonna wanna craft the resolutions to make sure they qualify for those programs. Uh, and so kind of having those preloaded, because obviously there's a, there's a funding cycle, you'll have the ability to adopt, adopt these policies, put them in place, and then when those grants, when the actual applications open up, you can show the state, hey, we've already done that, we have our policy. And then, for instance, on the House Bill twelve seventy-one, they actually, I was doing it for a different community, they actually asked me for all the resolutions, showing all the different qualified strategies. I had to come up with actual documentation that, that the council had, actually physically had those in place. They weren't, they weren't things that the council was going to do, they were council, they were, they were things that the council had already done for some of the grants. So I think that's a great strategy, Mayor Rico, I would certainly recommend.
One of the buildings we need to look into, because it's kind of comfortable I was talking about, is House Bill thirteen oh four. And that's a transfer mation for the housing grant program. They've got twenty-eight million dollars in that, um, according to this. Uh, the thing we've gotta be careful of is that it also talks about, there's some, there's one of these building here that crosses into other things like broadband and, as well, so we gotta be careful that we don't destroy what we're trying to do broadband housing at the same time. The other one is your middle income access program expansion, that would be another one for that middle income area that we've, you know, we discussed already.
That's more money in CHAFA, so Carol and I was talking about that last.
And there's, of course, revolving loan funds, and I think a lot of times people are looking at revolving loan funds, especially now with the interest rates rising, uh, I think people are looking more for grant funds. There's, uh, there's also the SB twelve, S two fifteen, with the infrastructure investment in John's act cash. And, uh, so that's, uh, it's not a housing specific bill, it says. So this bill may provide some, some grants, funding for local governments to apply for federal infrastructure funds that are based with housing initiatives. State managed funds are eligible to be used in conjunction with local connections for federal broadband, see that's on top, I mean, we have to be careful. I, I think that we need to look, look hard at these bills and any other bills that are coming out of Talbot to see if we can add to the pot, I guess that's what we need, and that way we can build our incentive program.
It's, yeah, I mean, I, I took that as, took that, that direction, love and clear from last time we had, so. I think these again are all more going around ensuring that they can be leveraged. And the AMIs are in the target point, price, target AMI points that the state considers them as.
Two point five is okay, but it's very minimal.
It's up for, you could always put more money out there, man. You know, and, and again, I think, eight, we're, a hundred units over two years would be a massive impact. Fifty units over two years would be a massive impact. So, um, and then again, having a TAFV deferral program. And also looking at these, uh, again, I always, I'm a big believer, you don't fail unless you don't learn anything from it. Yeah, you know, you could have, you know, you could offer these programs and you could see that certain things are, are working or not working, and adjust, again. Um, but it really matters, what really matters is you're sending out the signal to the development community that, that these funds are available and that we wanna see you, we wanna see you building.
Stuart, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to ask you, after you compiled all of your analytical data and statistics, being in SLIDA and Crestview, uh, what's the ratio of people that rent as opposed to the ones that own?
Oh, so those communities are much different.
Well, they are different from Trinidad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, uh, well, they're different from Trinidad, they're different from each other. Uh, in Crestview, for instance, it's a much higher number of folks who rent. Um, and I think you're seeing across the state that it would be rental, the folks that are renting, there's more folks continuing to rent. And your biggest buying power generation right now is the millennial generation, and they've been completely priced out in most markets in Colorado.
So for the people that strictly wanna buy, what are your thoughts about city, cities, municipalities establishing their own housing finance agency?
Yep, um, I mean, my, my thoughts on that are, that's.
Have cities done that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, and I, in Crestview, our average subsidy was eighty thousand dollars a unit.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand bucks a unit, um, is what we're typically subsidizing for still units because they're more than housing. So, um, and again, that's, that's not, this isn't apples to apples. But my point is making that comment is that you see, um, what you're seeing is communities having to step up to keep essential workforce, like teachers, cops, like, we had a moment in time where we didn't have a cloud drive within forty-five minutes in Crestview.
Would that be more advisable for a city that's maybe struggling economically to have that established?
You know, the, the, the advantage of what you're talking about is actually the housing programming as well that comes along with that. So when you have, what's what you're talking about in, I'm having a conversation in my county about the establishment of a regional housing authority. Under state statute, that regional housing authority has certain powers, and a lot of the powers are around programming, section eight vouchers, it's, you know, they actually even have a TAFV.
They regulate all of those powers?
They, 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 well, they, the establishment of a regional housing authority is dictated by the council and potentially, i.e. the county, if you ever do an original one. You determine in the bylaws the powers that you want to grant the housing authority at the time of the adoption of bylaws. But a lot of what, again, in my county, a lot of the, the, the reason that they're really considering it hard is not so much the development of housing, but the programs like down payment assistance, uh, rental assistance, rehab, energy rehab, that, or state division of housing programs, that if you are a regional housing authority, you can write grants to access that funding, very good, so.
No, just, uh, I like this program better than the last ones, I would say, I mean, we don't need to be told what we need to have, it's a little, just come back with better solutions.
Let's, let's see, let's see how in two years, not a good of a solution, that one, right?
Do all three of these programs that you're suggesting that we adopt, would they better position us to get additional money from the state, or is there one in particular that's the best?
You know, I'm, I am nearing, when I walk around your downtown, this is personal bias, but the downtown, I, I see is, I see all the efforts that Trinidad has made through the years when I walk around downtown. I personally think that you, for instance, the O Edit program that I talked about, that, that sends a really clear signal to the state that, that, that you guys are also stepping up to assist. Because that a lot, that, that grant was a fifty percent match. So if you guys were on a valuable property and you had to come up with fifty grand. And if you think about it, if you guys stepped up and gave them twenty-five, and then they only had to come up with twenty-five, and they were to walk into the O Edit office with a twenty-five thousand dollar match from the city, that sends a big support. I mean, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna send a major message to the state when they interview that allocation.
One of the things, just for your information, is that I think this is where Debbie, Mike Beasley can help us. Their recommendation is that they still top all these bills. And Mike, Mike Beasley is likely coming probably after this session.
That's what, that's what I was going to ask is, who can vet our resolutions to make sure that they, they go?
You know, certainly, we're here to do that as well, you know. But beyond me, I think is, what you're talking about is one hundred percent in there. What I would, what I would encourage the council to be doing is sending out the signal to the state funders of saying, hey, we're thinking of a pot of X dollars that we're talking about for housing incentives. How do we best, best leverage that? And having saying, you know, these are the things we were thinking about, how do they come with your potential programs?
Okay.
Yep.
So we were talking about Main Street and downtown Trinidad. What's the number of houses or properties that need to be to fulfill that twenty-five thousand dollar, I guess, grant? I mean, what is our, what is our number for our house?
If you were to, if you were to sell, are you asking about the needs assessment, or are you asking about how many you could use in finance? Needs assessment. The needs assessment, if you go back to this, your, your number down here is about sixteen nineteen, and then you have this giant one fifty on the bottom. So you, your, your rental, your rental was about one seventy-one need. And again, I think, that's where, again, when I start talking about downtown units, they're, they're typically smaller, upstairs units are smaller, so.
And, and these are not for the round up, these are what's already exist.
The, what your need is, is about one hundred seventy-one rental is. That's, that's the lack of, that's the, that's the lack. What I've done is that the reason, again, one of those strategies I see is that downtown units, because their size, right, aren't, they're not like a single family home, that's twelve hundred square feet. They're a studio, that's five hundred square feet or efficiency studio. Those units are going to rent for less, and they're going to have, they're going to open up that lower spectrum. You're, you're going to be opening up your lower spectrum of the rental pool in those units. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, I think I missed something. You were mentioning qualifying for one of the programs, not, not based on AMI, but some other metric?
Yeah, so what I'm suggesting is that as an applicant, so if, as a, let's say that, let's say that, let's use this example. Say I'm a teacher in, in the school district, and I want to get in a downtown rental unit. That was subsidized SUSE program. If I made, if I've been in my job for five years and I'm making a hundred and twenty percent AMI, I don't, what I'm telling you is that my rent will be at a hundred percent AMI, but not my income. So I don't, I'm not disqualified because I've been in my job for.
All of yours. I understand that.
Yeah. So, and that's the beauty of what you can do as a council. When you talk about state funds, they will income qualify. Like LITAC is an income qualified program, so the person will have to make sixty percent AMI or less. But what allows a property owner is it doesn't, doesn't restrict their occupancy of who it is, just the price point that they can set.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Couple of other things I, I just wanted to go over, some of these recommendations. We got utility TAF, backs off financing guarantees involved in that. Gap funding, payment assistance, special partnerships, infrastructure assistance, indirect matching grant funds. A lot of, the, the one item that I think that I would stay away from here would be financing, backs off financing guarantees. I think that's, to me, it sounds like that's an issue for the city itself.
Yeah, so those are all the ones that we talked to the council about. I would, the ones, I, I agree with you. So the only ones I'm recommending are the three I'm telling you.
Right, okay, I saw that. The other thing I was going to mention is that, I just put a couple of numbers here. There's three projects that are on tap right now that probably, I do know that one of them, like, is only be presenting. And if it all goes through, they're talking about beginning the building next spring. That's thirty-four units. And then, of course, Dana has her fourteen units that are in process now. And then we got another project that they're talking about ninety units. And so we're going, it could be within two years, we may be able to take care of a lot of this housing shortage that we have. And they're all pretty much, I'm not sure if the nine units are going to be rentals, or if they're going to be purchases, I don't know for sure. But anyway, they're, you know, some of this stuff may, I think we'll come to fruition, it's a matter of time. The thing that I was going to, let's see what I'll say. The big thing with this downtown, and some of these places that are going to have apartments above, this, these buildings in town were built at the time where there was horse and carriage. Now, we have good auto builds, so parking is going to be an issue that we're going to have to be careful with to make sure that there's adequate parking facilities for these places before we even say it's a A or an A. So I think we have to be careful with that. And, you know, there's a couple of different things that I think that, I think council would have to work on. Basically, two different agreement types. One is from the downtown sector. The other one is if we move into the other parts of town, because it's a different structure. So I think there were two different types of agreements, and maybe more, I don't know, that would be something to discuss. They usually got single family homes out there. The one thing, and Debbie, you're on, are you still with us, Debbie?
Yes, I am, mayor.
It was mentioning earlier that, like, Mike was saying is to get the word out to the state, at the state level, that we are really working hard at this. Is that something that you and Mike both need to work at for us?
Well, we can, but I think it would probably be appropriate to meet with Tara, since most of the housing bills are located or will be administered by the Division of Housing in DOLA. And thirteen oh four, that requires DOLA to adopt policy sample method. There's one bill that is administered by O Edit, the governor's Office of Economic Development. Mike and I certainly can assist, but I think, I think it'd be helpful to maybe touch base with Tara first and get a sense from her of how the department plans to proceed. Most of these bills take effect on signature, but the funds are transferred July first. So I think a lot of the bumping mechanisms tie right into the recommendations Michael's made in his presentation. And if you want further assistance from Mike Beasley and myself, we'd be happy to help.
I think one of the areas where I think that maybe you and Mike could probably help us with, like, that mentioned earlier, is pinpointing when's all these bills are out through this legislative session. With what we're trying to do, if we can get directed to the best opportunities in which bills, that's, I think, the thing that we would, I would like to see, and I'm sure council would like to have that as well. So those are the two things that I think that are really important.
I'm not sure if Michael's had a chance to read the handout I sent to you, but I think some of the recommendations he's put in his presentation tie into House Bill twelve eighty-two, thirteen oh four, middle income access program expansion, which is one forty-six, and the revolving loan affordable housing bill, Senate Bill one fifty-nine. I think once these bills get through both houses and are signed by the governor, it'd probably be appropriate, maybe, for some follow-up conversations. And I think his suggestion about council adopting a resolution or starting to move on it is, is appropriate.
Any other thoughts from council? Is there, did I get any questions, any concerns, or?
No, mayor, but along, along these lines, if we're, if council is serious, we're going to have to set aside two point five million dollars.
Do we have the money? That was my question.
We, we can have the money. We have some in reserves, and I'll run it by Cheryl, and how do we do that? And we have some funds directed already that are kind of sitting there, so. We might not have two point five upfront, but over two years, as we work through the program, if council is on board with it, we'll make it, so it'll happen.
Right now, we have, what, three, close to three hundred thousand, I think, in our.
Our incentive, thirty-four percent marijuana tax, that we do, yes.
So what do you, and of course, again, with Cheryl to see what we have right now, and we could pull over, and then that would be, allow us to look at what kind of leverage that would give us with some of these programs? Because if we're talking about two year, we don't know what's going to happen in two years with housing.
Right.
But if we could pull over something, maybe another million, that would give us one point three million to leverage additional funding, and that's what I think that we look at. Okay?
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, on the, the family legislation discussion, Mr. Valentine, was that, actually, that's going to be done, eh?
No, this is going to be a habit.
We want to welcome to the council. Yes.
Good evening, council, mayor. So I sent you, I think, a pretty thorough packet on what this program is. So I don't know if you want me to go through that quickly, or.
That's, that's council, did you have an opportunity to read through it yet? I, I did, so I, I just wanted to ask you, Don, do you, let's say someone has like a chemo treatment once a week, does that person, doesn't necessarily have to take all of their leave all at one time?
Correct, it can be used intermittently, yes.
And what is a serious health condition under the family definition, I guess you could say? Just any, like a emergency crisis, or something that's prolonged, pre-existing?
Yes, and that takes you away from work for a prolonged period of time, or, or a family member.
Can two family members do it at the same time, if they're working full-time?
If they're both working.
They're both working.
And they each have their own services?
Yes.
Yes.
They can, up to, what I read, eleven hundred dollars?
That's the.
Oh, that's the.
That's the maximum for me.
That's the max, okay, depending on the.
Yes, depending on there. And the less, the lower your wages, weekly wages, the higher percentage of weekly wage reimbursement you're going to get.
Okay. I think that's all I, yeah, I don't have anything?
I was trying to understand, if, if we, if the city opts in, and that means that we're paying the whole point zero nine percent, or point nine percent of the obligation. If we don't, then employees who want to pay point four or five percent as a self-employed person, I was trying to understand this.
Right, okay, so let me explain that a little bit. If we, if we opt in, there's a couple options. If we opt in, it means every employee is opted in automatically, first of all. So then we have two choices within that. We can opt in and we can choose to pay the entire point nine percent of that. And employees just benefit from that. Or we can opt in and then we pay the point four or five, they pay the point four or five. Those are the two options of opting in, yes. If we opt out, then an employee can opt in. And they treat them, the reason, only through the self-employed in there, they treat them as someone who is self-employed. If someone's self-employed, they can opt into the program. So if we opt out, our employees can opt in individually.
Okay, and do you have a sense of whether or not this is a popular idea on, on city staff?
No.
State bill?
Uh, not yet. I, I wanted to just tonight kind of make sure you guys had a feel for what the program was. And now, over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be rolling it out to the employees to get a feel from them, what they want to do. I have a feeling it's going to be pretty mixed. There'll be a lot of people who just won't want to, to opt in, they just won't want to pay it. It's, it's not a term money, but it's money. So people don't want to participate, they don't think they're, they're going to utilize the program.
They're comfortable with the idea that if they have to take extended leave, they get no pay.
Right.
If used up there.
Yes, but the city does have a generous sick leave policy. So if you've been here for a while and you've, you've been careful with your sick leave, then you can take FMLA and be out on sick leave and get paid. And still have job protection. So that is one thing about the city. So that's why I think there will not be a lot of people that will want to participate in this program.
Okay.
I guess, I might be totally wrong.
And then the other question is, how difficult would it be for our city to find contact labor for people who are gone for a period of time? What's our capacity?
I think that would be difficult, and I don't know that we would do that. I, I think it would be difficult to find people, like a lot.
Yeah, anybody can.
Yeah, that's all I have.
You know, the only question I had really was in the same vein, this council, my oakle trees, what, what the employees' reception was like for this? So realistically, I'd like to wait and see what that is.
Right. And I just wanted to inform you guys, because then when it comes back to you guys eventually, you're going to have to have public hearings, it all has to be done in a public hearing. And then that vote forward it onto the state.
Any other questions for me?
No other questions, sorry.
You know, this came about, actually, two years ago. The first year it was pretty much, they dropped off at the state, but then they brought it back up this year again. It was not very popular then to see them out through the, a lot of the membership, because we felt there was a lot of holes in it. With the opt, and I'm glad that they have the opt-in, opt-out, and option. The reason being is that, a few things, is that we have a pretty liberal, like you said, paid sick leave right now. So council would know what's the average timeframe that an employee would have for sick leave right now, per year.
You mean how many hours?
How many hours?
Is the average that people have? There's a lot of people that have five, six, seven, eight hundred hours. Some have more than that.
So there's, there's a lot of hours that are allowed right now.
It's uncapped for employees. You don't get paid when you leave, but it is uncapped.
This is a question I came up with, CML, some of the membership, is that, they were questioning, is that shouldn't they be allowed, shouldn't they have to take their sick leave first before they took the family leave? Because the way you look at it right now is if they took family leave and they used up their twelve weeks, and in the case of, let's say, a woman has a child and she has some issues, they can be extended even beyond that. And then they decide that they want to take some additional time for their P three and sick leave. You know, we're looking at, some of these employees could be gone for a period of six months, very easily. So that, that becomes a problem for the city itself and the workforce. So that's, that's a major problem. The other thing I was going to ask is this, is according to this, funds don't. The other thing I was gonna ask is this, is, uh, according to this, funds don't start getting paid until January twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
Right? Now, let's say January twenty twenty-three, in one month, you have one or two employees that go get sick. Have you done a, um, any figures as to how much money, if everybody opted in, uh, how much money would be collected in, in, for a period of one month?
Well, we don't keep the money.
No, we don't, but how much would be available that could be paid out to that employee?
Well, it doesn't start, okay, so, the, we start collecting money in January of twenty twenty-three, but you can't apply or utilize it until January of twenty twenty-four. So no employee can take off and utilize this program until twenty twenty-four. So there's a year of buildup from the state, or for the state, to accrue monies necessary to pay, um, people when they take leave.
Here's the major question that I have is, let's say that, uh, with all of our employees that we have, and we have a run of several employees out on this family leave, we're a lot of funds. Well, who pays if all the funds are exhausted? Who pays?
It's a program through the state, so where they're gonna come up with that money, I don't know.
That's a question I have, that's a serious question.
It's a very successful program in several other states, so I would assume it funds itself, and the people who don't take the leave ever, you know, that money's gonna build them up pretty rapidly, so.
I'm just concerned with, uh, the, the, the amount of time that employees have now. Are they all one to them? And of course, you'll find out at that.
It, I know, it is a little bit of a concern, and it's been talked about, you know, in, in the H R world, with other municipalities that have sick leave like we do. I mean, it, it is a bit of a discussion.
And I think the information that you gave us, I think it would cost the city about eighty thousand dollars, additional year?
If we, if we pay, if we paid the point nine percent. That's only if we paid the point nine percent.
So it'd be forty-five thousand dollars to go back, we had it into what, the year?
And, right.
So employees and employers, uh, contribute.
You split it.
Split, the premiums.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Any other question?
What was the three-year requirement, I couldn't quite figure that out, there's something about if you use it, you have to stay in three years.
If you opt in, we have, you have to be in it for three years.
You mean the city, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, even an employee, if, if, if the self-employed person out there opts into the program, they have to remain in the program for three years before they can decide they don't like it, they wanna get out.
Even if they let the employer and the city all together, they don't pay for three years?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, as a municipality, we have to remain in the program for three years, opted into the program for three years.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's how it's three years?
And my understanding is, if self-employed person opts in, has to remain, as an entity, they have to remain in that for three years.
Mr. Valentine, do you have any questions or concerns about the plan?
Um, well, I apologize, I had to catch Michael, so I don't know what was, was said, but, um, I know that we have to have several, um, public hearings on this. Um, if we opt in, then the employees have to opt in, all of them. So that's gonna be kind of a discussion with the employees, um, you know, there may be some that don't want to, but if the city opts in, they're going to have to as well, so. There'll, there'll be those hearings and discussion, uh, we'll need that input from the employees. Um, I mean, other than that, uh, I think it was mentioned that, uh, it, it will be eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars in the budget. Uh, and it will escalate along with wages, because it's, it's a percentage, right? So.
Right.
It'll have to be built in. It's a benefit, um, for the employee if we, if we offer it, um. How many will use it, how many, we would hope that everybody stays healthy and there's no, no tragedies and nobody has to use it, but.
Well, the other thing too, when I, it comes up is, uh, hopefully, we don't have good abuses of the, of the family leave, what we have to consideration. The other thing is, is that, uh, you know, C H two M, you know, they're a contract company. Uh, those employees will be eligible.
They would, they would be if, uh, it, it's Jacobs, no, but Jacobs, C H two M, they would, uh, have to go through their, through Jacobs.
Okay. That would be simple, then you'd have to participate from, right, and they're a contracting way for simply. Okay, anything else, Dad?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Mike.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I have discussion items for other, Mr. Martin.
Well, I was just thinking about, uh, up to any updates on the facilities in Central Park with the railing and the stairs for the upcoming, uh, triggers.
Oh, that's, that's an ongoing project, uh, I don't know, but, uh, they're, they're supposed to be patching, I'll check and see where they're at. They're supposed to be patching and cleaning the bleachers and everything, but, um, I'm not sure about the railing and the statue.
That'll be issue.
Okay, bless you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, what, uh, I talked to Mike a little bit, but I think what we need to do is, uh, out of our next marijuana fund money, uh, we need to set, uh, I don't know the amount, but we need to set some. We got four major arroyos in town that are just totally full of weeds and everything, and they need to be cleaned out, we haven't done it for the last couple of years. And with the way the dryness is and the weeds and the fire, I mean, if one of the lawyers, especially like on Nevada and Kansas, caught on fire, we probably end up losing a bunch of houses, because everything's attached to the fences. And up here on Baltimore, these streets up here are the same way, and that. So what I would propose is that, I know we have a certain amount of money that we put away in rainy day funds, uh, I won't take any, but maybe we can figure, uh, what an amount would be to subtract some of that out and, and just pay for it, because the city employees, uh, that we have, they, they, they don't have enough time to get what they got done, and they don't have enough people to do it. But I think that would be a really good thing for, for safety and everything with the way fires are going and everything, to get them all cleaned out, uh, that would be my proposal, so.
So, Mr. Valentine, on that, would it come from, maybe that's just come from the city projects funding? Or would it be from rainy day fund, I think the city?
Well, I think, uh, I think not the rainy day, but the marijuana quarter, quarterly.
Yeah.
Funding would be better, um, we do have some monies in, uh, Public Works for, for drainage, but, which is what it would be actually, too, is ten years of arroyos for drainage, but. Let me, uh, I'll get with Public Works and see if we can come up with a figure. And next, next round, uh, marijuana, uh, appropriations, I'll see.
I think Councilman Williamson suggested something along these lines a while ago, that we have someone, a point person from the marijuana industries, and it would, that's possibly Rusty, we could fulfill that role, and it would be good to hear from that person how things are going this year, does somebody keep tabs on, um, sales tax revenues and how things are going from that, uh, industry? And whether there are things that we can do to, um, assist it stabilize it through this.
Now, would it be somebody like Rusty, or would it be somebody from the industry itself, who rests?
Rusty evidently has a bunch of contacts in that industry, and I, I know that, and he's not one of the dispensaries, he doesn't represent. Um, I know that they're all very competitive with one another, so that's why I think Rusty might be a good point person, because he doesn't have a dog and a bite, and just be a servant for.
So what would that do, uh, do, would we have to develop that through a resolution, or? How would that work, because it would add another?
Yeah, I don't know if that'd be considered a liaison to the, um, to the industry, um. Um, um, let me check, I, I think this kind of is housed in, um, economic development, and I'll talk to Wally and see if he's, you know, in tune with what's going on with the industry as well, and, um. Les might have some questions on that, too.
Yeah, I have some thoughts.
Sure.
Nothing, man. The one thing that we, uh, we really need to, especially when you talk about the weeds and all this stuff, it's COVID important, we need to bring that over to the network section, okay? That's a, that's a major point because of, uh, actually, I do want to bring up something else, just real quick. I, I talked, being that, uh, I talked to Kim from the county, and she's the emergency manager, Cornea. And I was asking her if it would be good, because all these fires are going on, the dry is, it's been, it's the exception, uh, if it would be good to have a community forum on, uh, fire mitigation, that type of stuff within the county, within your own homes. And she said if we wanted to do something, she would participate, so that would be something that maybe, by the way. But I, I think that fire that we had just the other day in through town, you just scared back out of a lot of people.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Lucky that we were, you know, our, um, fire department was on top, but as quick as they were, they got all the additional help to take care of the problem, it was, it was scary. Other than that, I, unless, unless you have anything?
I don't, I don't, I also thank you, but.
Okay, this is now my sixth one, but, and, uh, what session? Thank you very much.